Good evening and welcome all. This is a public hearing relative to the Merrimack Village District proposed operating budget for 2018, 2019, and warrant articles for the same period. I declare the public hearing open for comments. The notice of this public hearing was advertised in the National Telegraph and appeared in the February 7th through 9th, 2018 additions. The public hearing notice was also posted on the Merrimack Village District website at www.mvdwater.org, the Merrimack Town Hall, the public library, and the post office. The purpose of this hearing is to allow comments from the public in relation to the proposed 2018, 2019 operating budget and 2018 warrant articles. The Board of Commissioners will not comment during this time. Prior to public comment periods, staff will present and explain the proposed operating budget and warrant articles for the Merrimack Village District. During and after this presentation, the public may ask questions, request clarification, and/or offer comments for the board's consideration. When all comments have been received, I will close the public hearing and the board will go into session to consider action on the proposed 2018, 2019 budget and warrant articles. Are there any questions about the procedure? Yes?
What does it mean when you...
Come on up to the mic.
What does it mean when you go into session? So if there's proposed warrant articles and no one says anything and we're all in agreement, what does it mean you go into session? Do they automatically go on to the March 27th meeting? Or can you guys change them?
At 4:00 this afternoon, the board met at a regular Board of Commissioners meeting with staff. We recessed that meeting to come here to the public hearing.
Okay.
At the end of our presentations and public comment, we will go back into sessions for board action for carrying the warrant articles and the budget forward to the annual meeting to be held on March 27th.
Okay. So after this meeting, the warrant articles, both petitioned and from MVD, there's no changes after this meeting? They go into the March 27th meeting as is discussed?
Any action on the warrant articles beyond how they're presented this evening will be taken at the March 27th meeting by the public.
Thank you.
So with that, let me just stick to the agenda. There are nine warrant... there are 11 warrant articles presented to us. And the first one, two, and three are simply ballot vote required articles. One, Article 1 is to elect two commissioners for a three-year term. Article 2 is to choose a district treasurer for a three-year term. And Article 3 is to choose a district moderator for a two-year term. Just prima facie. Those are ballot questions that will be presented the 27th of March. Article 4 regards upgrading and rebuilding the Turkey Hill Booster Pump Station. Article 5 is the operating budget. Article 6 is for a contingency fund. It appears every year on the warrant. Article 7 is a system development capital reserve fund contribution. That appears every year as well. Article 8 involves equipment and facilities capital reserve funding. Article 9 is a petition warrant article sponsored by Kathy Stack. Article 10 is a petition warrant article sponsored by Laureen Allen. And Article 11 is a petition warrant article sponsored by Nancy Murphy. And we'll begin by asking, are there any questions regarding Article 4? Seeing none, we'll go to Article 5, which is the operating budget. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't really have... we didn't give a lot of time to review. We just got this, so it's really quick to review it. So if you give us like a couple of minutes to review each one. I do have a question about any of them that raise and appropriate funds. So is this 1,300,000 raised? So that means raising the rates of your ratepayers? And my name is Rachel Walker, by the way.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
We'd be looking at going out to a... there was some MTB money, SRF fund money that will become available that will build a... we're approved for. We just need the approval of the voters to go and to get that, to build this booster station.
So do you have the amount of that money anywhere documented where we can see how much we're expected to get from that funding? And then is it exactly 1 million?
1.3 is what we're projecting that the booster station will cost to build. And that's what we're going to be looking for through... we've been pre-approved for the SRF or the... it's MTB money, but it's going to mimic the SRF funding, low interest loan.
Got it. So there's money that's been approved through what funding? Federal funding?
It's the MTBE settlement money that's been put available. It's for funding water projects.
So, and we're confirmed that we're going to get that money? Meaning if this, if we don't get that money, is that going to be responsibility to the ratepayers? Or is this an if we get it or if we don't? Meaning if we get that funding through MBT? Because you said you're not sh... we're... we may get it? Confused.
No, no. We've been approved for it. As long as it passes here, then we'll fill out the pay...
Got it. So more additional ratepayer increase based on this because the money's coming from MBT?
Well, it's a loan, so there'll be a... we have to pay the money back. We're not anticipating a rate increase at this time. That's not to say down the road if...
Got it. Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
I'd just like some clarification on the Turkey Hill Booster Pump Station. Does that include any...
Excuse me. When you come to the mic, would you please give your name and address for the record?
Sure. It's Wendy Thomas, 10 Wildcat Falls. The Turkey Hill Booster Pump Station, just want to clarify, does that include any filtration at all for the water?
No, that's strictly a... takes water from our normal pressure zone and supplies to high-pressure zone. So we basically run almost two systems in a sense. We have a high service area and a regular service area. In order to get the water to the high-service area, these pumps are critical. And they're aging. They're 20-plus years old.
Okay, so, but no filtration at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Nancy Murphy, 20 Brendelane. I have a question about the funds. It says MTBE funds that I... this was the funds awarded that... from the clean drinking water funds. My understanding is that as they are MTBE funds, it can be used for a variety of water solutions, but it can't be diverted for other purposes. Did we have an MTB issue that, you know, makes it appropriate for us to be using that for a pumping station as opposed to cleaning up like MTBE? Or if it's the clean water funds, we're using it to pump water faster, right? I mean, that was, but not clean up the water?
They opened that fund up for other water projects. So as long as it's water-related, we can apply for that funding? If I'm saying that correctly, Mike?
Yes. There were actually two funds. So the first one was a settlement fund. So it was a settlement. The companies, and I'm not sure which ones they were, settled. There was about $80 million. Anything done with that money had to be MTBE-related. ExxonMobil chose not to settle. They went to court, they lost. The state was awarded around $300 million. And there are no strings on that money that it has to be MTBE-related. So the... it's now called the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund. And there's advisory commission that's been set up to regulate how that all will happen. But as Ron said, any water system project is eligible for that funding.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Stack, 7 Millwood Drive, Merrimack. I wonder if I could just have some clarification regarding this article? And I think it's spelled out pretty clear here. The 1.3 is for the booster. However, there are monies for drinking water. There's a trust and a settlement for the water problem or concerns that we have here in Merrimack. I guess reading through these articles, I don't see where we are proposing any filtration assistance. I just see that we're boosting the water, unless I missed it. Is there an article in here that talks about helping people with filtration or helping the town with filtration? So there's no help to the town for filtration? Is that correct?
Are you... you're asking specifically about Articles 1 through 11?
Yes. I don't see anything in this document that pertains to water filtration and assistance to our residents and towns about water filtration.
There is effort in the budget to continue our testing and those tasks which we have performed. But specific answer to your question about Articles 1 through 11, no, there is no initiative for treatment.
Okay, thank you.
For filtering.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Koenig, 1 Danforth Road. I just want to be clear, this money from the revolving fund is a loan and gets paid back over what period of time and at what interest rate?
Oh, I don't know the interest rates off the top of my head. I don't know if...
I don't know the rates off the top of my head. It's usually a 20-year...
It's 15, 20-year increments, but the SRF, I think, was like 2%. 2.5% or something like that. I mean, it's a low-interest loan.
Very low interest, better than states giving to other municipalities and whatever. Okay, thank you.
Are there further questions?
More comments?
Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive. I'm just curious why there isn't anything in the budget about filtration? Is that something that can be addressed?
In the construction and deliberation of the budget, there was no initiative brought forward from the staff. The commissioners have not felt that there's, at this time, enough clarity to really begin proposing treatment without the opportunity to, one, be as clear as we can be about what it is we will be treating, and, two, what the cost of that might be. So in this budget, no, there is no real initiative in terms of treatment.
That's disappointing.
Doug Croce, 11 Woodward Road. Not to beat a dead horse, but I'm kind of concerned that at the last town meeting that we had regarding the water filtration, you informed all of us that there were these discussions that were moving forward behind the scenes, and you expected some sort of results with your lawyers and whatnot to come available. And now I'm hearing nothing. No movement forward, no discussion. Let's just sweep it under the road and move on. And I'm not a scholar on this stuff, but I am concerned. I pay you folks money. I expect answers. And I just would like some honesty. What are you doing right now regarding this problem?
The meeting you referenced, I believe, was last year. We did indicate there was some ongoing work with Saint Oban. That's still on the books and going as it has. And yes, that is directly related to perhaps treatment over Wells 4 and 5.
Okay. Is it harmful for you to just tell us that and let us know rather than sit back here and listen to nothing? Or the avoidance of the question?
Let me explain to you, or let me remind you again. The hearing tonight is on the budget and warrant articles 1 through 11 that have been presented.
I understand that. 1 through 11 mentions nothing about a common problem in our town. I'm kind of appalled that it's not at the forefront.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wendy Thomas again, and this is in direct response to a comment you just made, Lon. You said that you... the board did not have enough clarity and that you don't know what you will be treating and what the costs involved will be. How do you plan to get that information?
Excuse me?
You just said that you haven't gone forward with any kind of filtration systems or suggestions for filtration because, quote, "you don't have enough clarity about what it is you will be treating and the costs that would be involved." How are you planning to go forward to get that information?
We are continuing to gather information. Mike Metcalf from Underwind Engineering has been working with us in terms of some preliminary designing for treatment of 4 and 5 in conjunction with the other action we talked about. And in doing that, is gathering for us at our request information on the latest chemicals that have been proposed, perhaps to take place of the PFOA and PFOS, specifically carbon 6, specifically CFX. And we're gathering that information and learning what we can about it.
And when is his...
That was the wellspring of my comment.
And when is his report due?
Excuse me?
When is his report due? You said you asked for a report.
It's not a specific report that I'm referring to, Wendy. It's ongoing discussions we have with our engineers, and they bring that information forward to us.
Perhaps you should consider a formalized report.
Hi, Kathy Stack, 7 Millwood Drive. Just going back a little bit to a comment you made, Mr. Woods, regarding the consideration to treatment of Wells 4 and 5, I believe you said? And that's great. I think that's wonderful. However, has there been any consideration for filtration or assistance for the other residents that are perhaps on a private well?
I understand your question, but unfortunately, it's out of our domain. We're a public water supplier, and we are not given to interfere with private wells.
Okay, I guess so my concern is, having had discussions with the state, you are all in negotiations with Saint Oban. From what I have understood, Saint Oban is trying to negotiate for some resolution, particularly regarding 4 and 5. However, there are private wells that are also affected by, I'll use the word contamination, from Saint Oban. I have been told that part of the negotiations you're in doesn't just limit to Wells 4 and 5. It also pertains to perhaps the private wells that are affected by Saint Oban's doing. If that's the case, then I guess I'm asking the MVD, why are we not considering beyond 4 and 5 that Saint Oban is going to pay for? Help? What about the other people? What about beyond 4 and 5? And I know you're not insensitive to this. I really know you're not. I know you're sensitive to this. Everything I understand is that MVD has the ability, has the right, the function, job, so to speak, to extend the municipal lines. You can do it.
So the negotiations with DES and Saint Oban have been focused on the private wells? Part of their focus. Our negotiations with Saint Oban has been just on Wells 4 and 5. My understanding is that the state is very close to a resolution with the private wells that were being contested? And that was your area specifically?
Yes, and thank you very much, Ron. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the work that you all do. I really do. I am concerned, of course, I'm the representative of the private well that is contaminated. I know you have the power, your job, ability to extend the line. I guess I just have to wonder why you wouldn't recoup your money from Saint Oban, but help the town. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Peter Albert, 40 Level Street. I'm just looking over the budget, and I see 31% is other expenses. I'm kind of just curious what other expenses are. That's all.
Yes.
Yes.
It is detailed out in the budget. In the... so you actually have a part of that packet. There is the... there is a budget other than the...
That's the budget memo. I'm just looking at the memo.
Come on up to the mic.
I'm just going off of this, and I could see other expenses, and it didn't itemize it. I was just curious.
What did you break other into?
You talking about a full budget detail?
Well, it says, just 31% of a budget that says it's just highlighted as other expenses kind of just makes me a little curious. And so if it's on another page, spelled out, I can look it up.
So it's everything else in the budget other than, you know, the personal expense, the debt service, and the capital expense? It's everything else within the budget?
Okay, and I guess my question is, what are the other expenses? What specifically are they? Are they fuel, or is it different things like that?
Chemicals, yeah. Electric... all the utilities, the chemicals, fuel, the day-to-day expenditures.
Okay, that was all.
Are there any other... are there any other questions of the commissioners or staff or consultants?
Oops, sorry. Okay, so I'm looking at Article 6, where you're asking to set aside $20,000 for unanticipated expenses. Could you give me some examples of unanticipated costs that would come from $20,000? Has this been a problem in the past?
I can speculate as well as anyone in terms of an unanticipated expense that isn't in the several dozen lines of our budget, Wendy. We've had this article in the budget process for a good number of years, and it is required to show up as a separate warrant article, any expenditure, be it for widgets. And I don't mean that cavalierly. I just mean, for me to try to divine an unanticipated expenses is exactly what the contingency fund article is there for. And we are required at the end of every year, if there is dime one expended from that contingency fund, we are required to bring that forward at the annual meeting and explain it to the ratepayers.
Okay. So this is just something that's done every year?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, now I'm on Article 7, where it says the... there's a vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $48,750. Where would that money be raised from? Is it from the taxpayers? Where does it come from?
No, that comes from... there's a fee that's charged on any new service that's paid. It's part of the entrance fees. There's an SDC charge that goes directly into the general fund, but then it'll, by petition... not by petition, but the article to put into the capital reserve fund to be used for water expansion at a later date.
So you're not really raising, you're just allocating?
Correct.
So, okay. Okay, thanks.
Hi, Tom Koenig of One Danforth Road. This contingency fund is just an annual fund. It's not a renewal. So any money that goes into it, it goes back into the general fund at the end of the year to be reallocated the next year? Or does it carry over year to year? Do you have a balance in that contingency fund?
Correct. It's added every year.
Do you know what the balance is?
Maybe you can explain if it's not extended.
Is there a balance in the contingency fund? Is it increasing annually or do we spend it all every year?
No, to my knowledge, I don't know if it's ever been accessed.
We've never used it, so it's not something that we would expend.
It doesn't keep growing, the contingency fund. It just goes back into the general.
So it goes back into the general fund, which is what I asked first time. Okay. And the other question I had is this equipment and facilities capital reserve fund does grow, presumably. I wonder how much is in that fund? Article eight.
So the equipment and capital reserve, as of 12/31/17, there's 3 million?
Okay, those are the numbers down there at the bottom underneath the italic section? So there's $3 million in there? And you have no intention of using that this year? Or you don't know that you're going to be using it this year?
Yeah. If we lose a large segment or a large piece of our infrastructure, we're very comfortable having that money in a capital reserve fund. For instance, replacing a pump. Or, God forbid, something happens to the Hutcheson or Turkey Hill tank. We would be hard pressed to capture that kind of money, with a rate initiative or something. So it's not the kind of thing that we make annual plans for use. We do from time to time take from it to keep the infrastructure in good shape. We've done some tank repairing, some tank painting and so on. Comes out of that fund. But it isn't a fund that we tap into every year.
Is there an anticipated balance you want to reach? Or are you basically there and you're just maintaining it at this point?
We've identified in the CIP, there's, off the top of my head, I don't know the total, but there's millions that are as far as in repairs for aging infrastructure. So there's really no end goal. We've been just, we're just putting money away as best we can. And so it's the time that we go to replace. It may not be all bonding. It could be, you know, various different places that we can pull money from as far to make these repairs and replacements, I should say.
Okay. So it's a contingency fund, but you don't want to use it for Article Four presumably, right? Because you're going to borrow money to build that Turkey Hill booster pump station? But it sounded like you were repairing or replacing pumps.
We are repairing, but I mean, we have a low interest loan that we can go for. So we're keeping the other in savings when it's, you know, rather than bonding at a higher interest rate, I guess.
But it would seem like you ought to have some number that you would like to have that amount be as opposed to just continually growing it. I mean, if it was 10 million, would that be more than adequate? Or, I mean, if you're asking effectively the ratepayers to deposit into this account each year, right?
If whatever's left, yeah.
Is this coming strictly from leftover from last year's budget?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch that. I should have, but I appreciate your pointing that out for us. Thank you.
Hello, Gail Shaw. I live at 10 Templeton Court. I'm looking at the budget summary, page six. There's a couple of items I just would like an explanation as to what those items mean. New Hampshire DES. Then it says DWSRF. I don't know what that stands for, loan principal. And the figure's across. And then two items down, it says, New Hampshire DES, DWSRF, loan interest, which is almost as much as the loan principal. What is that? Can you explain it and maybe expand on the numbers a little bit?
Yes, treatment plant. That was a loan that was taken for the well, seven and eight treatment facility construction. So that's the repayment of principal and interest. And it's the drinking water state revolving fund. We were able to get a low interest loan that we just began paying back this year.
What was the original loan amount? If that's, because that's a very high interest. If that interest is based on what you're showing as principal. I, maybe I'm missing it, but why is the interest so high?
This was the first, 2017 was the first year that we began paying back the loan and it was a $4.3 million loan.
So the interest, basically, you're saying accumulated over a number of years?
No, no. The interest is just from the, initially, we had an interest payment due for part of the construction period that also had to be paid. And so that's making the interest a little higher this first year. But then the amortization schedule, which will have detail in the annual reports, and I can also provide anyone the detail in the office or forward to you.
Is there a way to look this up online to get more details?
The annual reports would have detail and we can provide, they'll be additional in this year's annual report. The annual report that is online on our website has a bit more information as far as the detailing on all of the debt.
Okay, so this loan here, when was that established? Was that like a one-time loan?
The loan was issued in 2016.
Okay. And that was the actual amount, 147,275 principal?
Those are the payments. That was the payment that was made, yes.
For that year?
Yes.
Okay, so the loan amount, the original amount, how much was that?
4.3 million.
Okay. And when do we anticipate that to be paid off?
That was 20 years?
20 years.
20 years?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, it's Wendy Thomas again. Article nine, which is to request that a town council member be a member of the Board of Commissioners for the MVD. Just want to say that I think that's a great idea. I think that our town is in crisis with this contamination and that it's going to be very important going forward to shake hands with many different groups. And I think that the town council and the water, the MVD should work together hand in hand. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Are we all finished?
Okay, with regard to, Wendy Thomas. With regard to Article 10, it's a little disheartening that this had to be brought about by a resident of our town and that it's not something that was initiated by the MVD themselves. However, I also think that Article 10 is a great idea. And while I'm up here, I might as well say that I also support Article 11, which calls for the transition plan to dismantle MVD and have it run by a professional organization. And the reason that I think that's good is I think that when all of you took this position on the board, none of you anticipated that our town's water would be contaminated. I'm not 100% sure, but I don't think any of you are chemical scientists or anything, or water scientists. And I think that the situation has just, it's gotten too big for you guys to embrace. And so I think that any help that we, that the town, at this point, that the town can get with regard to professional management, professional ideas about it, scientific studies and all that kind of stuff, I think that that's only going to help our town. So I'm absolutely in favor of Article 11.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Ayers. I live in 19 Jace Lane. Just a general, quick question with all the articles. I just noticed some are required by majority vote and then like two are by two-thirds vote. How is that determined? How that's going to be, why some are two-thirds and some are majority?
By ballot is ballot and the two-thirds ballot vote required is simply that. If there are 100 ballots cast, 67 votes, there's two-thirds of 100 and so on.
I just curious, then shouldn't all of them be by two-thirds vote then? I mean, I just curious how some are majority and then the other ones are two-thirds.
They're presented as, we're directed to present them given the RSAs and the, whatever the governs, how warrants are presented to the people.
Okay.
Usually if there's not, I'll just say from my own experience, I may be saying too much, but I'll say it anyway. If there's not a lot of money involved and so on, it's usually just a majority vote.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy Murphy again, 20 Brendelane. Can you tell me what RSAs those are? Because I had the same confusion as to, some of them had no financial impact. So I was confused as to why, same question. Why two-thirds majority as opposed to a majority vote? Do you know what RSA that is? That you said you're mandated by RSA?
My experience is that there are several and I don't have them here to look up and quote, but...
Okay, how would we find that out? Who could, could we call somebody? Would somebody at your office? I mean, somebody must have been aware of what that RSA was in order to bring those, you know, assign a two-thirds majority at the end of the amendment. So who would know that? Okay, you can look that up, Chip. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Jackie Flood, 20 Shore Drive. I was wondering if you would mind introducing yourselves and telling us what your function is.
Thank you, Jackie, and I apologize. My immediate right, we'll start down there and we'll go the other way.
Starting down here. I am Mike Metcalf. I'm with Underwood Engineers. So I am an engineering consultant for the district.
My name is Jeff Martz. I'm a hydrogeologist with Emery &amp; Garrick Groundwater. I represent the district.
I'm Chip Keller, just a commissioner.
Joe Comer, commissioner.
Lon Woods, commissioner.
Ron Minor, superintendent for the Merrimack Village District.
Michelle Holden, finance and HR director for the Merrimack Village District.
Kat Joyce, counsel to the Merrimack Village District.
Sitting in the front row, very quietly directing is Jill Lavoie, our assistant superintendent in charge of water quality and whatever. I sense that we're all done.
Sorry, one last question, Nancy Murphy. Could you tell me if the Merrimack Village District currently has any legal actions taken against them? I'm just thinking, I'm wondering in terms of should that occur or if that has occurred and there were damages assigned to, you know, that the MVD would be responsible for? Who would be paying for that? Is that the insurance? Would you have insurance to cover that? Or are the ratepayers, are we paying for it? Are we paying for the insurance to insure you against that? So it's a couple of questions. One, are there any legal actions currently against the MVD?
Do you want me to?
Kat Joyce, please.
Hi, Kat Joyce, counsel.
Hi, Kat.
Yes, there was a case initiated that we just received and it's not on the agenda. It's not a warrant article. It's not part of the budget. And in terms of damages, it's just, it's not something that's knowable at the moment. It's much too early to know where those funds will come from, if there are damages awarded at all.
Okay, so it's unknown whether it be insurance or ratepayers would be responsible for that. Okay, thank you.
Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive. So I just want to clarify, these warrant articles are being voted on in March, correct? Being voted on in March?
Yes, at the March 27th annual meeting.
And that's also at 7:00 p.m.? And that's also at 7:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
And one last question. Being kind of new to this whole process, this is my second year here. How are these warrant articles shared for the vote? I mean, how does the message get out?
The warrant will be posted at the several places that I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing. They'll be, I believe, published in at least one newspaper.
Because I noticed there wasn't anything on your sign as I drove here tonight. Would you post the next meeting on your own sign at the Merrimack?
Yeah, the comment was posted weeks ago in the newspaper. It's not supposed to be going out.
All right, thank you.
Wendy Thomas, I have a clarification question. Earlier, I think Lon, you said that you don't...
Earlier, I think Lon, you said that you don't represent the private well owners in Merrimack. Is that correct?
Actually, did you, you referring to me or Ron?
I, I think, I think you said it in response to somebody's question about how the, the private wells aren't your concern, it's just the public water that's your concern. Is that, is that the position of, of the MVD, that you have nothing to do with the private well owners in Merrimack?
It's not a position that we've taken, what, we're a, we're a municipal entity under Chapter RSA 52. That supplies public drinking water to ratepayers in Merrimack.
So I have a private well, as you've probably heard, that's, that's tested high for these chemicals. So I have a private well. I'm not on public water, but I do have a public water bill that I pay. So does that put me under, it's the hydrant, that's correct, but I still pay a bill to, to MVD. Doesn't that still make me a customer?
It gives you fire protection from the fire hydrant, for which, yes, we charge.
So that makes me a customer of MVD.
You continue to pay your fire hydrant charge for fire protection.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Stack, 7 Nolan Drive. This is a follow-up to the last comment. I was told specifically, and I'm quoting a member of your committee, that even though I am a private well, and I do pay a hydrant fee, I am a customer of MVD. And I was told that by one of your colleagues, who unfortunately is not here tonight. But I just wanted to clarify that for you, that I was told specifically, without a doubt, that yes, I am a customer of MVD. And I'm proud to be.
Hi, Lorraine Allen, 16, French Court. Thank you. Thank you, all of you. It has been really hard the last couple of years, and I'm glad that engineering is kind of on hold, because my understanding, as you probably know, is with bills that are going through Concord right now, in the next month or so, they're looking at the 1101, I guess is the air emissions tied to groundwater standards. Are you guys, do they keep you up to date on those bills? Or do you follow them? How do you, I guess a couple of questions. One is, how do you stay on top of what's going on in Concord right now? Is there somebody who's assigned to do that? To really see what's kind of coming, you know, your way? And because I know you're, you were worried last year about if laws changed, you know, what, what would you do? That's question one, then I have another one with that.
We do get notifications, I guess, to the basics of the changing laws. I know the engineers will come to us as well, and let us know what's, what's changing out there. So I mean, there's a couple of different sources that we.
Some of these bills, two right now are in the Energy and Resources Committee. One was the good old 485 from last year. And the new one is, let's see if I get it right, Senate Bill 309, which is interesting. So that one is kind of a cut and paste of the original 485 with different fiscal attachments. And HB 485 actually had the language weakened. I don't understand that process up there. It's crazy, but has more fiscal attachments to it. So it's kind of weird. So I guess what Energy and Resources is going to kind of try to maybe put them both together. But what they do have in common is timeframes are on there. The Senate bill, which, or Senator Daniels and some of our town council members talked about maybe getting behind at a meeting last month, has 120-day time period, which is kind of alarming. And I'm not sure that means phase in. You know, they're talking about MCLs. There's also another bill, 1101, which is the one that takes the air emissions and ties them to groundwater standards. That bill, I have just, following the amended language, because it's my hometown here, you know, I've been here since 85, and this is really important to me. That ties in PFNA and PFHXS, and, and you're nodding, so I'm glad, I'm just glad. I don't know what people know. Sometimes I feel like I'm reading this stuff when I'm in like the toilet zone, and I go, does anybody see this but me? It's crazy. You know, the groundwater testing with Dumpling Brook, the Merrimack River, the monitoring wells, and the storm drain. That recent report that came out tying that all together is just massive to me. You guys have seen those levels. They're really, really high. So whatever it means to New Hampshire to be in a groundwater and agroforeprotection, it's not zone, it's district, I found out, which most of the town is. I look at that, and I say, well, why isn't there a notice of responsibility filed by DES? Well, they like to partner with businesses and all that stuff. So in following, you know, the memos, you know, I know you have to anticipate what's coming, but Massachusetts later this year, my understanding from someone I spoke to last week, is they will be setting standards, you know? So there's a lot of, there's a lot of momentum on this issue. And my worry was the same worry as I had a year ago. You know, hearing what I'm hearing from elsewhere and following this issue, I worry that we need to be on top of this. Not just because I'm not going to be all social worker-y, which I am, you know, it's the right thing to do. Because the right thing to do costs millions of dollars. I know that. I'm a very fiscally responsible taxpayer person here in New Hampshire. But there's also change coming at us, and laws coming at us, even with the Clean Water Act suspended for two years. We still have things that are happening, and I just worry about how we're going to address that. And I just, my ideal situation is some kind of a, you know, citizens, water, town, whoever wants to have a sit-down, really, you know, engineers, let's just, we have so many people in this town who know so much. We need to like sit together and just figure out what we want to do about this, and how we're going to phase it in. And, you know, all those chemicals that are the newer replacement ones, you know, Clark said at our October meeting, and the January meeting also, he said a statement that I believe was in Gen X, you know, we're testing for Gen X, and it's, and it hasn't, quote, shown up yet. So when I heard that, I thought, well, where's the test for it if you did it? I put in an email to them that I haven't heard back from. Then I noticed, which really alarmed me, they have a list of 16 PFAS analysts that they've asked St. Oban to test for on their own land. And their current plan of action is they should continue to test in wet and dry conditions every three months. So I look at that, and I say, great, now we know these numbers are really high, you test every three months, it's coming at us. I don't believe it's going to flow magically, you know, away from us. And we know the air notice went out in 2003. Here it is 2018. They're still not in compliance with that. This is really, this is, I, I don't want to be a, somebody called me a fear monger on Facebook forum last month. I cried, I really did. And I said, I'm not a fear monger. I really care about this stuff. I really, really do. I respect the heck out of all of you. This is a tough, tough situation. You know, I'm getting emotional, it's been so hard. Bah, sorry, but you hear what I'm saying. It's, it's there. It's coming here, waiting for the memo on the Gen X testing, because, circling right back to make my point, on the list of analysts that they asked St. Oban to monitor for quarterly, indefinitely, which, that's great. What does this data do if we don't apply it? Gen X is not on that list. That's a concern. We need, as a community, to say, why isn't that on that list? Is it there? And this proprietary blend, if I was a swearing person, this proprietary blend, insert swear of your choice here, I'm not, it's not okay. This propriety, you know, we trade secrets. That's, again, blank, blank, blank. Wendy would do a better job with that phrase, but I, I can't say it publicly, but she'd say, just say it. So it's really, it's really a problem. It really is. Really, it's a problem. Thank you.
You know, I just, I think this is a really great discussion. Thank you for having us all tonight. Yeah, I think this is a really great discussion. Thank you for having us all. I just wondered if you could give us, as, you know, commissioner and superintendent, Ron, are you the superintendent?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, what are your thoughts about all this? You know, I haven't really hear, heard, heard you speak about our PFAS issue in town, and, you know, I was a little alarmed to see some of the warrant articles that MVD proposed didn't really say anything to it. So this is such a big issue, this contamination issue in our town, yet I haven't really heard what you think, and what your thoughts are, and how to help alleviate this problem for your ratepayers and for our community in the future. Love to hear your thoughts.
Seeing no further questions, I declare this public hearing closed. The Board of Commissioners will now reopen the session of the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners meeting to react to the warrant articles and budget for carrying forward to the annual meeting of the Merrimack Village District, March 27, 2018, at the JUES Middle School, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.